September 25th, if the clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell is absent. Councilmember Moran.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
And Miklos.
Here. Next item is our Pledge of Allegiance. So if you please rise and join in Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, if the clerk would please call the next item.
Your next item on the agenda is Agenda Updates, and you have no updates this evening.
Okay, then the next one would be?
The next item takes us to Business from the Floor. You have two requests to speak tonight, one from Mike Barnbaum and one from Dan McNeil.
Okay, so Mike, you're first up. Business from the Floor are items that are not agendized. You get three minutes to speak on anything that you wish, but because they're not agendized, it's illegal for us to give commentary, direction, as far as what our thoughts are, other than to give direction to staff for things possibly to bring back to us. So if we look like we're deer in headlights, that's why. So with that, hi Mike, how are you?
Good.
A's clinched their spot today.
Oh, they clinched last night, and it was very exciting. Thank you so much.
Officially clinching their own, rather than just Tampa losing.
Yeah.
Caught the tail end tonight.
Oh, thank you, thank you so much, I appreciate it. But to your last point there, you made, yes, at the end of what I'm gonna present, it will have a recommendation or request to agendize an item. So that's all the action I'm gonna ask you to take tonight, exactly to your point. Okay, so here's the presentation. This is not new, though, to Councilmember Moran, or one of your favorite citizens, Coco Cocozella. We made the presentation last night. But for those who haven't heard, from a Facebook post from an entity. Attention Folsom Stageline Users. The city of Folsom will host an open house to discuss a proposal to transfer Folsom's transit services to the Sacramento Regional Transit District. The open house will be held on October 10th, that's a Wednesday, from 3:00 to 6:30 PM, right next door, my left, your right, in the Senior and Arts Center located at 48 Natoma Street. Staff from both the city of Folsom and the Sacramento Regional Transit District will be available to discuss the proposed annexation, answer any questions, and seek input. As part of the proposal, the Sacramento Regional Transit District is committed to a seamless transition with no impact to current riders. Service levels will be maintained or improved, and there are no short-term plans to make changes to the existing bus service, stage line branding, or fares. All current Folsom Transit staff will be offered similar positions within the Sacramento Regional Transit District. If I'm not around, for further information, please contact Matt Mauk of your staff at area code 916-461-6754, or M-M-A-U-K@folsom.ca.us. So in closing, this is a very important and sensitive item. It wasn't something we, as a grassroots organization, had wanted to discuss unless there was something official on file and online, and that there is now. We're very comfortable discussing it. We would like to see that the open house take place, people come, as they please provide their comments, and we would request your action to place this on the agenda either Tuesday, November 13th, or no later than Tuesday, November 27th, at your regularly scheduled time of 6:30 PM. We've double-checked the calendar, none of those Tuesdays fall the week of Thanksgiving. The Tuesday where the week of Thanksgiving falls would be the third Tuesday, the 20th, because the fourth Thursday is the 22nd. So we took care of that. We want to make sure that that did not interfere for that week. But we also want to make sure that this comes to the current council, and this could be a legendary landmark legacy action item you take and can be remembered for, particularly if you're gonna be leaving the council this election cycle.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Is that a reasonable request?
I will certainly look with the manager and see what the agenda items look like, and we'll place it accordingly.
Thank you, Mike. I just want to let you know that the mayor and I have placed this item on the October 23rd agenda, so we're all set.
I got a question, Mike. Why did you pick that location?
That location was on a Facebook post presented by the Sacramento Regional Transit District. Our grassroots organization, knowing how sensitive that this item was, wanted to let the public agency make the decision and not us.
Okay, only reason I say this could be a big crowd, and the capacity about 100 at most, and the community center is much bigger, it's about 500. I just don't know about the location, that's all.
You know, that's a good point. I can certainly talk to the city manager about that. Thank you for bringing that up. The reason we picked or recommended the November dates, SECOG is gonna be going through their unmet transit needs process, and we saw on the calendar and after speaking with their coordinator, on October 23rd, they have a 6:00 PM hearing in the city of Elk Grove. So there might be a scheduling conflict on the 23rd, so we thought, giving everyone time to digest what's at stake, meetings here in November would be better than a meeting in October on the 23rd.
Well, Mike, I'll disagree with you on that one, because, again, we have to balance out the total agenda for everything in the city, and the October 23rd does fit that, and it won't conflict with any of the unmet transit needs. So we've already taken that into consideration.
Okay.
I prefer that, especially with the employees, you know, and the public, it's the sooner we put it out in public to have public input in it, the better. So that way, if we delay something, then we can take it back into November as an action item if we have to, rather than try and do it all in one night. That's our strategy.
Okay, that's a reasonable.
It allows more public input, instead of just have a public input with an action I'm already addressed that we're gonna do it right then and there. We'll have it advertised in case we do, but if we don't have enough answers for everybody, I can put it over to another meeting.
That's true.
So it's a little more, it gives a little more public participation that way.
Okay.
That's our thoughts.
That's a good strategy of business. If there's not enough information yet, yeah, certainly you could put it over to November 13th or the 27th, but at least those, thankfully, are not the weeks of Thanksgiving.
Yep, appreciate it. Thank you, Mike. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker?
Your next speaker is Dan McNeil.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Folsom City Council. As you know, California has a Public Records Act where private citizens like myself can request public records from their government. The purpose of this law is to keep the citizens informed about what our public officials are doing and when performing their official duties. In that spirit and under that law, I am today requesting that the Folsom City Council provide me with the following. Full and complete transcripts of each and every text message exchanged between Folsom City Council member Roger Gaylord and Folsom Planning Commissioner Kevin Mallory that have taken place during the city council meetings from June 13th, 2017, during the city council meetings, because I've watched most of them online, on the city website, and it seems to me that, other than the only city council member that seems to be on an electronic device, seems to be Roger Gaylord, and it seems to be his phone texting, and I don't get why somebody would be doing that during a meeting, that their full attention's supposed to be on what they're doing. Anyway, to the recent, to the most recent city council meeting, September 11th, I also would like full and complete transcripts of every, each and every text message exchanged between Folsom City Council member Roger Gaylord and Folsom Planning Commissioner Aaron Rawls that have taken place during the city council meetings from June 13th, 2016, 17, until the most recent city council meeting, which was September 11th. I just kind of find it odd that somebody on this council would be texting other people during a meeting, and why they are. Are they feeding information to somebody else? Are they getting information from somebody else because they're not prepared? We have seen that in past city council meetings where Roger has not been prepared. We have seen where he's had to recuse himself on a couple of different occasions because he posts on Facebook, and I think it's Folsom Chat, public information on city council items that have not yet come to the city council. So if I could, I would like to request those. Thank you.
I think there's a formal process that you go through the city clerk's office for that.
Absolutely. Okay. Thanks, Christine. Thank you.
You have no more requests to speak.
Okay, next item, please.
Your next item tonight is your first scheduled presentation item. This is the presentation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming October 2018 as Arts and Humanities Month.
Okay, and I have the pleasure to present this to Heather Gordon, who's a community member and Arts and Cultural Commission member. So Heather, if you'd meet me down here at the microphone.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Gaylord to come with me since he appointed you, but it's a special term for everybody.
The best thing about these presentations is I make you hold it.
Oh, nice.
So you get to hold it.
Should I hold it like this?
Yeah, that way they're... The... I'm gonna sneak this over here for us. I use your glasses. Okay, this is, as the city clerk read, this is a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Folsom proclaiming October 2018 as Arts and Humanities Month. Whereas the city council recognized that arts and cultural activities benefit the residents and visitors of Folsom, and are a significant contributor to Folsom's quality of life, and the Arts and Cultural Commission works with the community to increase public awareness of, understanding of, and participation in humanities and the arts. And whereas for more than two decades, the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by thousands of arts and cultural organizations, communities, and states across the country, including the White House and Congress. And whereas Folsom has a diverse and vibrant art scene, with local organizations providing opportunities for the public to celebrate and participate in Arts and Humanities Month in a variety of ways, including the following. What is a big list? Gallery at 48 Natoma Street, Secret Language of Dreams, exhibit by Claudia Cohen and Folsom High School Students Show. The Folsom History Museum, Bikes and Brew, Brewing a Cycling Cultural Event, Exhibit, excuse me. Bank of America Gallery, 18th Annual Visual Arts Faculty Exhibition, Historic Folsom Live Art Experience, and that's www.harriscenter.net for more information on that. Dr. Brakra, Ukrainian Folk Punk Harris Center, The Simon and Garfunkel Story at the Harris Center, Frankenstein Turns 200, Folsom Main Library, now I gotta see that one. Okay, Turns 200. Sutter Street Theater, Legend of Sleepy Hollow, Sacramento Guitar Society, Duo Clavitari, apologize if I butchered his name, Sacramento Blue Society Harmonica Slapdown, A Night with Janis Joplin Harris Center, Oktoberfest Craft Fair, St. John's Baptist Church, Folsom Arts Association Artist Demonstration of Lucia Rothgeb, Vida Academy, The Great Composer's Music Series, The Empire Strikes Back, Folsom Lake Symphony Presents Brilliant Masterworks, Free Fall Stage, Blindmatch.com, Folsom Lake Community Concert Association Presents The New Cordette, Fall Festival at Palladio Piazza, 12th Annual Folsom Focus Photography Contest, Finding Neverland National Tour, Harris Center, Trick or Treat Festifol and Costume Contest, Historic Sutter Street. Those are just a few, there's a lot more, I'm sure. Now therefore, I, Stephen Miklos, mayor of the city of council, do hereby proclaim October 2018 as Arts and Humanities Month in the city of Folsom, and invite our residents to recognize the contribution of the arts to the community. I encourage all members of the community to attend these special cultural activities proclaimed as 25th day of September 2018. So congratulations and acceptance for the Art and Cultural Commission. Roger, you wanna say a few words while you're here?
Heather, I watched Heather, actually, through social media, anyway, and I have to say, I'm in awe of her talent, and recently she's been appointed to the Folsom Arts and Culture Commission. So she, actually, I'll let her speak on an event you have coming up that, you know, represents this month as well, so.
Cool.
Sorry, I'm a little bit taller. So Sunday, September 30th, from 10:00 to 3:00, we're doing the first-ever Folsom Live Art Experience, and that's gonna be on Sutter Street. So we're gonna have 16 local artists, they're going to be live painting, and they have all different genres of art that they're doing. Some artists are like street, like spray painters, and then we have artists that do brush painting. So they're gonna be out there, they're going to be live painting from 10:00 to 3:00, and then after, well during, we're gonna have a silent auction. So people can come by, and they can actually bid on the paintings, and at the end of the event, we're gonna auction off the paintings, and we're going to be giving the funds to restoring the mural that's on, I always forget the artist's name, but it's on Wall Street, the big giant mural that sits on Sutter Street and Wall Street. So we're gonna be donating the funds to help restore that, yeah.
Very much, thank you.
Yeah, and there's also gonna be, if you get there early, at 8:00 AM, there's gonna be a pancake breakfast, I think it's like $10 a person, so if you, and it's, this is a family event, so you can bring your kids out. There's gonna be Chalk It Up at, I wanna say, after the pancake breakfast, on the amphitheater, anywhere from 10:00 to 11:00, chalk it up for the kids, so your kids can come out, and they'll be able to chalk up the amphitheater and join in on the art fun as well.
Cool, that sounds like fun. Well, thank you for putting that together.
Yeah, thank you guys very much. This is awesome.
Nice to meet you. Okay. Go ahead and call the next item, please.
Your next item is 6B. This is Presentation of the 2018 Community Service Day Results.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Christine Brainard, Communications Manager with the city of Folsom, and I'm pleased to share with you a recap and results from the 2018 Community Service Day, which was held on Saturday, September 15th. More than 3,300 people participated in the 15th, or the 5th Annual Community Service Day. This was record attendance, and more than 500 people participated in this year's event compared with last year's event. We had more than 70 projects taking place throughout the city that day, and volunteers of all ages, interests, and backgrounds were able to participate in service projects in the community. The morning began with a kickoff over at Lakeside Church, which included a check-in, t-shirt handouts, a hot breakfast and coffee, and welcoming remarks before volunteers went to more than 70 volunteer sites. That day, volunteers assembled over 500 military care packages that will be shipped to overseas military troops. More than 120 pallets of food was collected for the Twin Lakes Food Bank, and we saw a 15% increase in donations from last year alone. The collection drives were very successful, hundreds of eyeglasses were collected for the Lions Club. The Folsom Lake Lions Club collected so much yarn and fabrics that it took four SUVs in order to bring all of the items back to sort, and it took them over a week just to sort all those materials. And 106 bicycles and one unicycle was donated to the bike drive, and those bikes will be refurbished by the inmates at Folsom Prison, and then later given back to community members in need. 60 volunteers helped sort Legos and packaged 700 individual packages of Legos, and those were being donated to the Folsom Police Department and other law enforcement agencies, and they're given to kids who are experiencing crisis. An invasive water weed, known as the water hyacinth, was removed from the Willow Creek, and as you can see in these photos here provided by the Folsom Telegraph, this is no easy task. Quite a few upgrades were made over at Powerhouse Ministries, including the retaining wall that you can see here on this slide. You can see the before and after picture taken that day. There were major cleanups over at Folsom Lake, at three different sites, at Brown's Ravine, Beal's Point, and Folsom Point, and there were also, there was also a major cleanup at Natoma Station. And between Folsom Point and Natoma Station, just those two projects alone, volunteers collected 4,560 pounds of garbage that day. Perhaps the most impactful service project was neighbors helping seniors' projects. We were able to help more than 20 seniors in need with gutter cleaning, painting, landscaping, and planting. And we received this note that I wanted to share with you, and I'll read it to you now. It said, "Many thanks to the volunteers who spent Saturday morning relaying a walking path, making it safe to walk to my home. My entire community of Pine Brook Village really appreciates those hours and supplies donated for this work. From the bottom of our hearts, thank you. Bless everyone who helps someone. The most precious you can give someone is your time." So these projects really did make an impact in local communities here in Folsom. We had extensive media coverage leading up to Service Day and throughout Community Service Day, including KCRA, Good Day Sacramento, CBS 13, Folsom TV, Folsom Telegraph, and Style, and we had heard from several volunteers who walked in that day to help, that they saw it on KCRA, and they wanted to lend a hand that morning. So it even helped us get volunteers the morning of the event. Volunteer opportunities are still available through the Twin Lakes Food Bank. They receive so much food that they still need help sorting out that, sorting out all the food leftovers. So anyone interested can visit their website, or give them a call and find out how to sign up and give them a hand. So I wanted to share with you a video from this year's Service Day, which I'll play Folsom Community Service Day unites thousands of volunteers of all ages and interests to complete projects that have a lasting impact across the city. I think it's amazing that moms and dads, kiddos, teenagers get up early on a Saturday morning when they can all be sleeping in because their community matters that much.
What I think is important is that it actually, instead of saying about doing something good, it's about doing something good.
200 people came together today to paint kindness rocks, and they're gonna take them home and spread them throughout the city.
I felt for myself in previous years, I wasn't able to volunteer because I have small kids, and there wasn't really a place in which my small kids could help out. So my three-year-old was painting rocks with us today, as well as my eight-year-old and lots of other family members.
You're having a hard day, and you find something positive like that in the sand or behind a tree, it really can brighten up your day and just change things around for you.
Anyone who lives here in this community gets a chance to show up and actually help each other out.
To learn more and get involved, go to folsomcommunitieservice.org. And that concludes my presentation, thank you.
Very nice, Christine.
Thank you.
And thank you for hitting another record. Next item?
Next item is 6C, Presentation Celebrating the 20 Year Anniversary of the Sacramento Groundwater Authority.
Good evening, Marcus.
Good evening, Mayor Miklos, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, Environmental and Water Resources Director. We have John Woodling here tonight from the Sacramento Groundwater Authority, Regional Water Authority. He is the executive director, and he has a brief presentation, hopefully five to 10 minutes, that will just cover 20 years of the Sacramento Groundwater Authority. So I'll bring up John Woodling.
Good evening, John, thank you for coming out this evening. Appreciate it.
Good evening. Thanks, Marcus, Mayor Miklos, members of the council. As Marcus said, I'm John Woodling, Executive Director of the Sacramento Groundwater Authority. Before we go forward, I do want to thank, in her absence, Councilmember Howell, who has been heavily involved over these, at least some of those 20 years, in serving on the Board of Directors. So, that's forward, huh? There it is. So in 1998, your predecessors on this board, along with City Councils of Citrus Heights, Sacramento, and the Board of Supervisors of Sacramento County, set the Sacramento Groundwater Authority in motion, and that came out of the Water Forum. And in the 1980s, our water supplies were headed towards a crisis. The conflict between increasing diversions of surface water and protection of the Lower American River was coming to a head. The drought at the end of the 80s and early 90s really, really brought that to a head. So in 1993, the region came together and created a stakeholder collaborative process to come up with a plan for the future that had two co-equal objectives. Water supply for the people and the economy out to the year 2030, and protection of the Lower American River, the fisheries, the parkway, the aesthetics, the recreation. And then ultimately, in 2000, an agreement was signed for the Water Forum. Let me back up a little bit. The Water Forum has seven elements, and I'm gonna primarily focus on three today, and those are two related to surface water, which is, in wet years, increased surface water production from that 2000 out to 2030, but in dry years, be able to roll back to 1990s level, to leave more water in the river for fish in the drier years. To do that, we needed to rely more heavily and optimize the use of the groundwater basin. And to use the groundwater basin, we needed to have sound management. And that really was the driver for creating the Sacramento Groundwater Authority, having that foundation of protection of the groundwater basin, so it could serve our needs as part of the water supply. So as I said, 1998, the three cities, the county came together, formed a joint powers agency to use the police powers of your jurisdictions to manage the groundwater basin. At the time, that was unique in California. Groundwater was not managed with that institutional structure. Further, you deferred downward to 14 water suppliers and a representative from self-supplied agricultural groundwater users and self-supplied commercial industrial groundwater users to form a 16-person board, essentially saying, "You police yourselves, and we can defer that authority down to you to do the job." When we started that job, the groundwater basin was not in good shape. On the left there, you see, we've had, from really the mid 50s, after the war, until the mid 90s, decline of groundwater levels in this basin north of the American River, about two feet a year, so that after that 40-year period, we had groundwater levels 20, 30, 40 feet below sea level, and 60 to 80 feet below where they started. So we had a quantity problem. In addition, we had a quality problem. We had McClellan Air Force Base contamination sitting in the middle of the basin, we had the Aerojet contamination plume coming under the American River into the north area, so we needed to address that as well if we were gonna use this groundwater basin for the So on the quantity side, the goal was really to, as I said, use more surface water in the wet years. So bring surface water in to those people that otherwise would have continued to pump groundwater, to offset their pumping. And then in dry years, like in our recent drought, be able to rely on the groundwater basin when we may have shortages of surface water. So you look at the two pie charts, and you see, in the wet year preceding the drought, 2011, our surface water was about 55%. 2014, we got that down to 39%. So we developed this capacity, and are continuing to develop the capacity to move back and forth. And the result of that is, when that started in 1998, until now, we've really seen this recovery of the groundwater levels. And even during the drought, we've seen a dip, but recovering back up to where we are. So we've done a lot to make that groundwater our backstop for the drier years. On the groundwater quality side, there are a number of state and federal regulatory programs to monitor, protect, remediate groundwater quality problems. At the time, though, in the early 90s, 2000, they really operated in a silo. So the projects to clean up the Aerojet plume, for example, were operating over here, water suppliers trying to use groundwater were operating over here, and we weren't really being effective at managing the groundwater basin for all those purposes. So we really, over those years, have established relationships with the regulatory agencies at the state and federal level, and the responsible parties for... at the state and federal level, and the responsible parties for that contamination, where we can work collaboratively to clean up the groundwater while we use the groundwater for our purposes. And one of the most impressive examples of that is the first facility where we actually took water from the Aerojet plume, and rather than clean it up and put it in a storm drain, we actually put it to use in Carmichael Water District on the Anselhoppen Park. So we're doing the work to take that water out of the ground, clean it up, but now we're putting it directly to a beneficial use. Turns out, your predecessors were pretty smart, because in 2014, the state passed something called the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, in part because Assemblymember Roger Dickinson had been a part of the Board of Supervisors when SGA was created, and saw the groundwater problems that we all read about in the rest of the state, and said, "We need a structure that everybody puts groundwater management in place." So many places in the state have created a model similar to the Joint Powers Agency that SGA was in 1998. We're now, though, a part of a larger area, this North American Groundwater Subbasin. So we have five agencies now we have to work together with to manage this entire subbasin area up to the Bear River and Yuba County. And SGA is really able to take the lead on that because of what we've learned over the years. We were successful in getting nearly a million-dollar grant from Department of Water Resource to do that work, to develop the plan for the future. So what does that plan for the future look like? It looks like doing more of what we've been doing, broadening that conjunctive use, as we call it, so we can shift even more so to surface water and even more so to groundwater. Because, as you probably know, we're hearing our snowpack's going to decline into the future from climate change. So we really have three reservoirs in the state. We have the Snowpack, which is a seasonal and annual reservoir. For us here, we have Folsom Reservoir, which looks pretty small on this scale, and then we have the groundwater basin. So what we are trying to do for the future is, as Snowpack diminishes, runoff comes earlier, Folsom Lake is, really has to shift more to a flood protection function than a water supply function, be able to take more of that water off during those peaks of flow, put it in the groundwater basin to be there for us when the dry years come. So I will finish there, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So John, to that last point, you know, there's been talk, and technology's around for the last 20 years or so. I remember when one developer was talking about doing something down in Bear Ranch on Marietta and creating a system where during the wet times on Montique, capture rain and recharge, as I always call it, reversing the pipe flow and charge up the groundwater. Do we have anything coming down the line where we can actually do exactly what you said? Because I couldn't agree with you more to see this water go out to the ocean where we should be pumping it back into our groundwater system.
Yeah, and you know, the way we've done it so far has been what we call in lieu recharge. Instead of taking the surface water, trying to put it into the ground, we've built additional surface water treatment, we've built transmission to bring it to those people that didn't have access to surface water before. So they don't pump groundwater, and the groundwater levels rise. We're also looking at next phases of actually looking at wells to inject more water into the ground, and then primarily more south of the river, where we've got more open land, we've got permeable soils up along the Sierra Foothill Front. I think 10, 20 years out, we'll see a lot more of that direct recharge, putting the water on the land and letting it seep in.
That makes a lot more sense.
As a flood protection benefit and a water supply benefit.
Yeah, because I mean, we've been around. I actually signed the Water Forum Agreement 2000 on behalf of the city.
Right.
And we talked about it even then. And so it's one of those technologies that people seem a little slow to embrace, but yet they don't want to build any surface storage, true surface storage. I mean, we talk about, of course, Auburn Dam, I think will never happen, sites, reservoirs, obviously got legs, and a couple others up and down the state. But to me, it just seems like there's so much out there, and you just hit it on the head, you can recharge wells to help. And obviously, by that photo, I think that was demonstrative of the fact that, when you look at the groundwater basin that we have, that's probably five Shasta lakes alone, at least.
Yeah, well, we actually, in that space that we created by drawing the water level down over all those years, if you look north of the river, south of the river, we have roughly about 2 million acre feet of storage, which is two Folsom reservoirs
Yeah.
under the ground that we could store water in.
Yeah, but I see, but I agree with you, there's more down that way that we could do that, like you said.
Yeah, a quick comment.
Since you're the water guy.
Well, and I sit on the Regional Sedentation Board, and as I'm sure you're aware, John, they got a significant grant, things like $280 million, to actually work on groundwater recharge with, you know, just the cleaned-up wastewater and stuff. So, and it's a significant amount of acre feet where, instead of sending that clean water into the delta, actually bringing it back in and technically helping the Casumnas River to a degree. So I'm sure you got all that plugged into this.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
But that was, I thought that was a really significant.
And similar, even at that large scale, they're still doing it in lieu. They're going to bring it to farmers, shut off their wells, and let that water recover in the Casumnas and provide the environmental benefit there.
Right. A lot of good stuff happening. I'm happy to hear everything you guys are doing and how far out you're looking, so.
Back in 20 more years.
Well, I'll tell you what, I won't be sitting here. I guarantee you that. But thank you. Anybody have other questions for John? Well, thank you again for taking your evening and coming up here. Very much appreciate it. Okay, call the next item, please.
Your next item is the City Manager's Financial Report for Fiscal Year 2017-18, Fourth Quarter Financial Report.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight as your City Manager and also your Acting Assistant City Manager/Finance Director, because Jim Francis is home recovering from a knee injury. So I'm going to do my best Jim Francis impression tonight with Teri's help up there in running the slides. So why don't we go up and pull up the first slide? We have our General Fund summary. You'll see that we ended the fiscal year with approximately, by adding approximately $1.2 million to the general fund balance, which is excellent. The percentage of expenditures to fund the balance remained consistent from the last year. You see just a small change there. That surplus came equally from excess revenues and expenditures from the budget. And if you'll move to the next slide, we know that our city policy is 15%, and you'll see in this chart that we have had seven years of growth in the general fund balance. It's sure nice to see that upward trend. It does continue to grow, although, as you'll see, at a slower pace at this point. Move on to the next slide. Revenues are up about, as you'll see at the bottom there, about 4.6% from the previous fiscal year. Our revenue projections were very accurate. Property taxes increased 5.3% over the previous year. Median home prices jumped by 9% from fiscal year 17, which is exciting for all of us that own homes in Folsom. Sales tax showed a decrease, but it was really just due in a correction for payments received by the city incorrectly. Those corrections will appear in fiscal year 19. Under charges for services, you'll see that our ambulance revenues increased due to the third ambulance that was activated in December 2017. Development fees increased due to increased construction of single-family units and also multifamily unit, the Peak Apartments. And licenses and permits also increased due to increased building activity. So that's all looking strong and robust.
So Elaine, let me just jump in here, just to help folks looking at this. So when we're looking at our FY 17-18 budget there, and it says projected FY 17-18, that's really what we're looking at, is kind of our final tally as we close out the books on FY 17-18.
Exactly. Thank you, Andy. All right, General Fund major expenditure categories. Expenditures were overall under the budgeted amount, but they still increased by 9.1%. Salary increases reflect cost of living adjustments, filling more positions rather than leaving them vacant, and step increases. Our benefits increased due mainly to the PERS contribution. O&amp;M increases due to inflation, especially energy costs and contractual services. You'll see that our debt service did increase as well, and that reflects a no-interest loan from SACOG for the Johnny Cash Trail project to be paid back over five years, and we have made one payment so far of $407,000. So on this slide, you'll see that the expenditure proportions by type of service remain essentially the same. So when we talk about that pie of expenditures, really the pie, you know, the slice of what each expenditure category is getting is remaining constant. You will see an increase in community development and public works, and that's due largely to contracts and capital outlay, both of which were partially offset by revenue increases. So again, all of this is on target. The next slide shows you major capital project expenditures, and the completion of Economy Park. Our Fire Station 39 that we just opened a few days ago, and the Johnny Cash Trail were our biggest capital projects. But you can see the rest of the list there. Under the Water Enterprise Fund, revenues were up for the second year in a row due to increased use post-drought, which, you know, makes rational sense, and also just additional connections as houses come online. Our expenses met expectations, and you'll see our working capital improved. Water revenue, again, we just see here, if you take a look at this chart, we see that the increases followed by those years of decline during the drought situation. The Wastewater Enterprise Fund, revenue increased as expected due to increased use. Expenses were as expected, no debt service, in line with our pay-as-you-go policy, and again, the working capital position improved. Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, revenues were down slightly due to decreased prices out in the market for the sale of recycling materials. Operational expenses came in just as expected, no debt service in line, again with our pay-as-you-go policy, and again, our working capital situation improved. Risk Management Internal Service Fund, revenue was up 4.9%, reflecting higher contributions. Expenses were up 5.3% due to higher rates. The unrestricted net position improved and will be used to keep budget expenses down. Active employee health costs increased by 1.4%. Retiree health costs increased 7.5%, mostly due to the increased number of retirees. Workers' comp increased 14.4%, and liability insurance increased by 9.7%. The Trail Grant Special Revenue Fund, this fund monitors primarily the grant funds that are used for trail development. We keep it on our watch list due to the negative balance. It has a negative balance because our grants are reimbursements for our expenditures, and therefore, we expend money first. So we just track that one. And finally, I'll be taking, I'd be happy to take any questions or comments. Just some general overall comments, fiscal year 18 was a strong year for us financially. We accomplished our service goals, the general fund balance increased, the utility funds had positive years. The only issue that we're watching is that while we had a surplus, expenses increased more than revenue. This is not a trend at this point. This is just something to note for this year that we would not want to see continue, obviously. So with that, I would be happy to take any questions with the assistance of Teri Hamley.
Okay, any questions for either Elaine or Teri?
I would just say exceptional, but we do look forward to Jim returning. So thank you, thank you, Elaine.
I don't know how to take that compliment, Andy.
Elaine, or Teri, whoever, that slide presentation right there is very concise, very accurate.
Yeah.
Can we be sure we post it on our website if we can?
Absolutely, yes.
And then also maybe circulate it for the five of us.
Yes, we will.
Because I think that fits well with the line item stuff we have in here.
I'll provide it to you electronically in a hard copy, and we'll get it on the website ASAP.
Teri, as always, good job. Probably burned the midnight oil to get it out, especially with the boss being gone. So thank you for all the hard work.
Yes, thank you, Teri and staff.
Okay. Appreciate it, thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Your last scheduled presentation tonight is Item 6E. This is a presentation regarding the Folsom Plan Area Quarterly Update.
Good evening, Mayor Miklos, members of the City Council, Pam Johns, Community Development Director. And per your request, the Community Development Department is bringing forward a quarterly update to share information about planning, site development, and building activity in the Folsom Plan Area south of 50. So we've prepared about a 10-minute presentation, and this evening, I'll be going over the planning activity and then asking City Engineer Steve Kron to get up and really go through the rest of it. Just a quick flash of the entitlements, the original specific plan map, the land use map, plus a compilation of all of the approved specific plan amendments and tentative subdivision maps that this council has approved since that time. So as you can see, most of the residential land east of East Bidwell Street has been approved for tentative subdivision maps, and as you know, we have started residential construction south of 50. We have a few applications in addition to those residential neighborhoods and maps. We introduced the Shops at Folsom Ranch, the first commercial site development here in this slide showing you that location. And we are moving forward. We just received a revised set of plans on this project to address some circulation and access issues that were raised, and expect that this will go to the Planning Commission for final action in late October or November. We also have, I'm going to go back to this slide for just a minute. We introduced the application for Spanos multifamily apartments the last time we were here, and that's actually been put on hold as the applicants say pencils down for a little while in order for them to take a look at some site improvement and off-site improvements that they weren't anticipating that needed to be done, just really, in large part, given the phasing of development out there. And so pencils are down on that for a while, but we do expect that to come back, and we'll keep you updated through this quarterly reporting. We have, like always, had a lot of interest in opportunities on this site, and we meet with anyone who wants to sit down and talk about, you know, what the vision is and ideas for activity south of Highway 50 and anywhere else in the city. We expect that within the next quarter, we'll have about three new applications south of 50, but won't be able to report on that until we actually have formal applications submitted. We've talked with folks about a range of job opportunities and senior age-restricted housing of a couple different varieties, and so it's been an exciting time, certainly, because there's a lot of interest. We'll be meeting with the school district in the near term to talk in more detail about the first elementary school site that's located within the Mangini Ranch Phase 1 area, to talk about the details of plan and schedule for that, and we'll be reporting on that the next time we come back. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve to talk about the site engineering.
Thank you, Pam. I'll go through a little bit through the construction slides, and feel free, if you have any questions during the slideshow, feel free to ask any questions, interrupt, and I'll try to respond to them. This is an overview of the slides we're going to be looking at throughout this presentation. So I'll start with the first one. That's the wrong way. This is a slide we've shown before. This was what we approved for the backbone infrastructure two years ago. They started this work to get this backbone infrastructure, and in April of 2017, it's been ongoing since that time, and most of it's nearing completion. So we'll see some photographs of current photos of these improvements, and they're very close to being completed, and some are already in operation and use by the city. This is a view of the sewer lift station. This is, will serve the entire plan area as ultimate build-out, it's sized to accommodate full build-out of the plan area. Already said that. And it's in act, we are operating it now, it's been completed, and this is a view of the site. This is the 405 booster pump station. This is pumps water from Placerville Road all the way up to the top of the hill, which is the Zone 5 tank, and the Zone 5-6 booster pump station. This is just about complete. pump station. This is just about complete. It's about ready for operation. There's a few things we're working out on the pumps and a couple other things, but this is very close to being completed. Here is a view from the top of the hill. This is next to the cell site towards the eastern side of the project. The tank is in use now, and in the background, in the middle there is a future location for a non-podable water tank, which will be done in the future. And in the background of the site is the 56 booster pump station, and that's close to being complete as well. So again, here's kind of the areas. If you've been out there, there's a lot of grading and construction going on, and these are the areas kind of highlighted that's ongoing work. In the purple there is Mangini Ranch. We'll have a few more photos of that. The green area is something that's just happened this last week where the White Rock Springs Ranch Project has started Phase One of their grading and construction. So it's just south of Russell Ranch, and if you drive down Placerville Road, you can see it's just getting started up there on the top of the hill. Here is an overview of both projects, Russell Ranch and Mangini Ranch. Obviously, on the left there, there's areas that are paved, and we've actually accepted those improvements. And home construction, model home construction as well as production home construction has started in those villages. That's Villages 1, 2, 8, and 9 of Mangini Ranch. The area to the right of that is the mass grading for Villages 3 through 7 that started this past summer. And so we expect to see those improvements done in 2019, and homes being built in those villages probably in 2019 as well. This is actually the school site. It's graded. I believe the landowners are close to transferring this property to the school district for the elementary school. So it'll be ready to be transferred. Here's some of what they deal with quite a bit in the site. A lot of rocks to deal with out there, a lot of rocks being moved around, a lot of blasting, and a lot of activity that's been going on, ongoing. This is an area that's being ready to blast. You can see the drill rig, and those are little blast holes. They drill the holes, pack them with dynamite, and break up the rocks and move the rocks around. And this is an ongoing operation. Some areas are really good to work, and others are just rock, and so they have to break them up and move them around. So it's quite an operation. Lot of activity, a lot of big equipment to do it, and they're finding all kinds of different uses for those rocks. Now we jumped into Mangini Parkway. These are the completed improvements. This is the crosswalk at the entrance to Mangini Parkway on East Bidwell Street. As you noticed, the landscaping is complete along these areas, and these are the surrounding the Villages 1, 2, 8, and 9 where the home construction is ongoing. Here's a view of East Bidwell Street looking north along the frontage. I think it's just north of Mangini Parkway. We have plans in right now, coincidentally, for our first traffic signal down there that we expect to be constructed at that intersection this time next year. Here's another view looking north again from East Bidwell and Mangini Parkway. Now we're jumping over to the Russell Ranch Project. They started grading last year. Quite a bit of grading has been going on since last year, and they're getting, they've just started paving. This is Alder Creek as it intersects with Placerville Road. It runs up the hill, and it's paved all the way now up to the tank site, the cell site at the top of the hill. This was just recently painted, paved this past month. Here's a view from above. I think this is very close to the tank site itself. So you can look down, and this is the same road. There's our first roundabout in the plan area being constructed there. And that's Alder Creek Parkway, Grand Prairie Road intersection. And this is Grand Prairie Road as it comes back around. It loops around the entire, what they're calling Phase One of Russell Ranch. All those rocks were built, all the rockery walls were built along, all the way up the hill to the top. I think they're about 80% done with the grading. So I think they're trying really hard to try to get most of this grading done for Phase One before we hit range this winter. This area will be paved. This portion of Grand Prairie Road should be paved probably in the next month. There's another view from near the top of the hill. This road here in the foreground connects to the White Rock Springs Ranch Project, which I mentioned earlier has just started grading to the south of this project. And here's a view again from the recreational site where we expect to see, which will become, I believe, the sales office for the new home company. We look to see that being built this next year as well, and that's looking down on the Villages for Phase One. A total of eight Villages in Phase One for Russell Ranch, and they're taking shape there down below, as well as the rockery walls being constructed to support that development. Here's an aerial view, I think from a drone, of the Grand Prairie Road intersection and the work that's going on, which we just showed. So like I said, it's like getting close to being done, and I think they're looking to try to get models out there in very early 2019 for this village, and then production sometime this time next year. Here's another view from the rec center. It's a good shot, good view from up there. And this will be where, like I mentioned earlier, this will be where their sales office is located, and this is just below the tank site at the top of the hill and the cell site as well. Here's some landscaping and lighting that's been installed. I think we just completed that. It's all done, and so it'll be established in advance of people moving in and out there as they drive into their new home. Here is just a map of the, an exhibit of the map activity that we have ongoing right now. The final maps that are approved by the City Council in the first column, that's Village 1, 2, 8, and 9, where the homes are being constructed now. We have, I think, 16 small lot final maps in review, which we expect to be approved and approved by the council over the next year. And those will be the locations in those Villages which are under construction now, getting model homes and production homes this time next year. So expect a lot more activity in 2019 with home construction as these improvements get completed this year and in early spring of 2019. As of today, we have issued 75 building permits for those Villages in 1, 2, 8, and 9. Those homes are being built by Taylor Morrison and Lennar, which was formerly CalAtlantic. I think almost 90% of the homes that have been sold are to Folsom residents and residents in the very close regional area. So the next phase, as I mentioned, is it starts in 2019, and those are the Villages that are in planning process and/or in construction right now. These are overview of the models. We've seen this photograph before. It circles that area where we've approved the maps, and the model home construction is moving forward. That's kind of a tough one to look at, but that's an overview, a little closer view of the model home construction and the production home going on in Villages 1, 2, 8, and 9. There's a couple, there's a photograph of Taylor Morrison's home. I believe they opened up at the end of August, and they sold quite a few homes before the models even opened. And there's Lennar's model complex, and an overview and some of their renderings of their homes. So these are the areas that we're focused on for this next year, 2019, where we expect to see home development continue. As I mentioned, White Rock Springs Ranch just started grading, kind of a tough time to start grading, but they're moving forward, and they have the plan to hopefully grade through the winter time and be on par to issue model home permits sometime next year.
Pam, would you want to take over at this point?
Yeah, I just want to mention that with all of the building activity, we've had a lot of increased interest and questions and inquiries in our department about the activity. And so as of today, we have updated the city's website for the Folsom Plan Area with a lot of context and background information, as well as all of the, you know, documents and maps. And so this is something that several of you have received, questions and comments that you've directed our way, and we've given you a link to kind of some interim information while we were building this data, but we worked really hard to get this live today so that we could announce tonight that it's available to you to go and access information in a more user-friendly format with more context for folks, understanding that this is, you know, certainly an approved project that is, you know, growing and becoming part of our community, and this is an opportunity for our residents and folks who are interested in our community to see the information from the city's perspective. So hopefully you'll find this helpful and can provide that information. Always feel free to drive that traffic to us, but we're excited about showing you the information in a more user-friendly way.
Okay. Any questions for either Pam or Steve?
Just a quick one. So I don't know who wants to take this, but I had a bunch of questions written down. You answered all of them except one. So as we all know up here, an important piece to meeting the needs of the future city of Folsom is our new corp yard. So just the 15 seconds, everything moving along okay as far as the plans for that? And, you know, actually annexing a small piece of property there to get us situated with the corp yard with a lot more capacity.
Thank you, Councilmember Moran. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, if I may answer that instead, the annexation process, as many of you know, has completed, and we are in good shape. We're good to go. The transaction itself has not been completed at this time because there's a task that Granite Construction needs to fulfill for AWOJ before AWOJ is able to move forward with its work closing. As far as city's concerned, the city tasks have all been completed, so we're good to go. We're just waiting on that remaining piece for AWOJ to finish before AWOJ can close. As far as the design and construction of the physical structure, that...
Yes, I know. There's a lot of work left, I know, but the important piece, as we all know up here, I mean, this was a lot of work getting this situated. So my thanks to everybody involved in that. I know that was technically difficult as well as other things. So thanks for all your work on that.
Any questions down here?
Yeah, thank you for this. And the only thing I'd see on here that I was looking for prior was an expected infrastructure timeline and mitigation measures as far as, you know, what residents can expect to go along with this build-out that incorporates, you know, traffic between south of 50, north of 50, Highway 50, all of that stuff. So I would like to see. I know I see an infrastructure tab on here, but I'm not sure if that shows that piece.
So phasing of improvements, like roadway improvements and things like that? I think we can add something like that in. We don't have it now, but that's something that we can certainly incorporate. So just give us a little bit of time to put that together, and I'll notify the council when it's up.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Again, kind of like the last item, if you guys wouldn't mind providing us just an electronic version of your slide presentation, I think it'd be helpful for us as well, because it could be right at our fingertips. So thank you, thank you Steve, appreciate it. Okay, next item, please.
Your next item this evening is the consent calendar.
Okay, we have consent items A through G. Anybody wishing to pull anything off consent? Otherwise, a motion is in order.
Sir?
Got a second by the Vice Mayor?
I just had a quick question on C.
We'll pull it for a question then. You want to do that?
Yeah, we'll see.
So I'll move A, B, D, E, F, and G.
And the Vice Mayor agrees with that, so call roll on those items, please.
Councilmember Gaylord?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes, and Item C is read by the clerk.
Item C is Resolution Number 10184, a resolution requiring quarterly reports to the City Council on Measure E proceeds and expenditures.
Councilmember Gaylord, you had a question?
Yeah, my question is, is this preemptive? In case it passes, this is where we're looking to implement?
The answer is correct, yes sir.
That's really all I wanted to know. Simple, sorry. Yeah, I'll move it.
All second, so we got a motion second. Councilmember Gaylord was the motion maker. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Gaylord?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. And the next item?
That takes us to City Manager Reports.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Barnbaum covered one piece of news that we will indeed be hosting an open house on Wednesday, October 10th from 3:00 to 6:30 p.m. in the Senior and Arts Center to discuss a proposal from Sacramento Regional Transit to transfer Folsom Transit Services into RT. Vice Mayor Sheldon, just to assure you, it is an open house forum over three and a half hours, so we think that the location is proper because the number of people will kind of ebb and flow. So I think we're comfortable there. This issue will be brought before the council at its October 23rd meeting, so encourage transit users and anyone else out there to attend, and we will publicize this as widely as we can. October 23rd will be a big night at council because we will also be having a Historic District Parking Workshop to discuss the potential implementation of time limit parking in the Historic District residential areas. This is in response to concerns raised that employees and visitors from the commercial portion of the Historic District are using residential parking spaces. So staff will present the issue as well as various options for the council's consideration. This is a workshop format, which means that there will be no formal action taken, but staff is hopeful of having some kind of direction at the conclusion of the item as to where to head. So mark October 23rd on your calendar if you're interested in that issue as well. Bark and Splash is coming up on Saturday, one of my most favorite Saturday events. If you want to see some super happy dogs frolicking at the Folsom Aquatic Center, please join us for the 16th Annual Dog Swim Event from 1:00 to 4:00 on Saturday, September 29th. The entry fee is $10 per dog, but humans are free. Fire Department Open House and Pancake Breakfast takes place on Sunday, October 6th at Station 35, which is at 535 Glenn Drive, right across from Walmart, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Come and enjoy some wonderful pancakes, and also tour the station, explore our fire equipment and vehicles, and learn some safety tips. And then finally, Folsom High School's Homecoming Parade will take place on Wednesday, October 3rd. Motorists are asked to avoid Sutter Street between Reading Street and Coloma Street will be closed, and Coloma Street between Sutter Street and Mormon Street will also be closed from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. to accommodate the parade. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you Elaine. Roger, we start your end this evening. Anything?
Yeah, I wore a blue tie today to express my deepest condolences and respect for the loss of Deputy Sac Sheriff, Deputy Mark Staschek. Actually, I can't even express the respect I have for our law enforcement community, and just wanted to offer my deepest condolences as a council member, as well as my fullest respect and speedy recovery for Deputy Julie Robinson as well. So thank you to all the men and women of law enforcement. I appreciate everything you do for us.
Very well said. Ditto up here. Thank you Roger. Andy?
Yeah, let's see, just a couple of things. Let's see. First of all, as Mike alluded to, and Business From the Floor talking about, you know, the potential for annexation into regional transit. A lot of people have worked hard on kind of setting the table for that, but I just want to assure the community that, you know, I believe the merits of this will rise to, you know, kind of the approval of not only this council, but if it takes this item to be discussed at a new seated council next year, you know, we're very comfortable with that. So there's no sense of urgency. I know Mike's excited, but, so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, whether this council actually addresses that with a vote or a future council, you know, it'll come in due course. And I just want to thank the City Manager and Regional Transit folks for setting up the open house. You know, I think that's when we can really discuss and share the merits of this. And let's see, I had something else here. No, that's it. Good evening, everyone.
If you remember, we'll come back.
No, that's all.
Vice Mayor?
That's my gig, Andy. You shouldn't have those mentions yet. All I want to say is I'm having a little problem with some vision. It's a regress of two years ago when I did the fireworks, a little too long and too hot, and I got what they call snow blindness, and I didn't have my vision. And I woke up this Thursday, went to bed Thursday fine, got up Saturday, and couldn't read the paper or anything else in print. So bear with you. If you want to send me an email, give me a phone call if it's really emergency, because I make sure like Holmes with my big eyeglasses, I can read it. I hope that goes away in a few days, maybe. I hope that goes away in a few days, maybe a couple weeks. That's all.
Mr. Mayor, I did remember. So, as Christine was going through the presentation on the Community Service Day, you know, the 3,300 people, that works out to like 4% to 5% of our entire population, which is incredible. And I think it's just, you know, at least one, one small thing that, you know, makes this place, as we were recently recognized as one of the best places in California, if not the best, to raise a family. So, I just wanted to, you know, the entire community is a part of that. And I think that Community Service Day is probably the best reflection of that. So, incredible effort, so, thanks.
No, I agree. I was doing those numbers when Christine told me, at that morning, it was like 32-something. And by the afternoon, it was 33. And I'm like, wow, that's almost 5% of our population. So, outstanding job by Christine and your helpers, as well as the Community Service Day Committee. It's a lot of work. It actually is a lot of fun putting it on. It's even more fun today that we actually do the activity, even though we're working really hard. But it's just, it's just like Andy captured it. It's just, it's so prideful in taking the actual time to make a difference. And just seeing the picture that's senior. And I know where he lives. That meant a lot to them. So, good job all for that one. The only thing I had was, I was disappointed in the Sac Bee article that came out regarding this, the structure that we had to, we had a workshop. So, first thing I want to clarify, and that was inaccurate in the paper, was it was a workshop regarding our zoning ordinances. It was not an action item for this structure. I got a lot of emails wanting to know why we didn't take an action to do something with this structure. Number one, let me clarify again. Zoning code violations are prescribed by law in the manner they have to be dealt with. So, even if we came up with a variance, or even if we came up with an ordinance, you can't go backwards. They can only go forward. And that is progressive, not regressive. You can't reverse grandfather a variance, or you can't reverse grandfather a ordinance. So, the inaccuracy with the bee, I want to clarify that we are, hands are tied and prescribed by law, that that code enforcement action has to be taken the way it is. We can certainly, through the workshop, it'll be coming back if we want to create something differently. But I just wanted to clarify because it was inaccurate in the bee, the way it was reported. And I thought it was important to, maybe all of us are getting the same emails I am. So, I just wanted to clarify it right here and now that it was not an opportunity for us to take an action because there was no action to be taken. It was a workshop. So, also wanted to thank Park and Rec staff for their outstanding job in putting again, putting together again, the Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament last Friday. For most of you, it may not know. That tournament was in its 21st year. And we average about $10,000 a year in the funds that we raise. And those funds go to the Two Cave Teen Centers at both middle schools. So, when you do the math, that's $210,000 over that 21-year period of time as an average, plus the eight years that I know you helped me with, with the FAA as well. When I ran the Vladi Peja Basketball Camp for those eight years, we contributed another $10,000 each of those eight years. So, when you put that together, we raised over $300,000 for those teen centers. And I think the results are paying off widely in the results of what those kids are now able to do versus what they could do in those four and a half years. So, congratulations to Park and Rec staff. Fabulous job, everyone had a great time. Unfortunately, I would have preferred the earlier week weather than the Friday weather. It was a little warm. And last but least, I do have to report out because I did expenditure some city funds.